Good evening and welcome to the City Council Norman Utilities Authority, Norman Municipal Authority, and Norman Tax Increment Finance Authority Meeting of February 26, 2019. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Councilmember Beerman here. Councilmember Carter.
Here.
Councilmember Castleberry.
Here.
Councilmember Hickman.
Here.
Councilmember Wilson. Councilmember Clark.
Here.
Councilmember Holman.
Here.
Councilmember Scott.
Here.
Mayor Miller.
Here. I'd like to make an announcement. We usually don't run quite this late. Our computer apparently has crashed. And all that means, it's not dangerous, but it means that the people at home are not going to be able to see this on the cable. So anybody that's wanting to watch will need to go to YouTube if you want to alert anybody. Are they going to be able to hear this, people on the cable? Or they'll just...
No.
Okay. Okay. So I'm sorry. We can't seem to get it fixed. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Item number three. Now I'm going to wait to bring it in after the proclamation. Okay. Item number three is approval of the City Council Retreat Minutes of July 28, August 2, and September 18. City Council Special Session Minutes of September 18, 2018, and February 5, 2019. City Council Conference Minutes of October 25. City Council Finance Committee Meeting of January 17, 2019. Joint City Council Stormwater Committee Minutes of January 17. City Council Study Session Minutes of January 29. City Council Norman Utilities Authority, Norman Municipal Authority Minutes, and Norman Tax Increment Finance Authority Minutes of February 12, 2019. I need a motion to approve the minutes.
Still moved? Second?
Motion on the floor is to approve the minutes. By a show of hands, all those in favor? Those opposed? Same sign? That was unanimous. Item four is a proclamation proclaiming Friday, March 8, 2019, as Women's Day in the city of Norman, and the month of March, 2019, as Women's History Month. I'll entertain a motion to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation.
Still moved?
Second.
All those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed? Same sign? That was unanimous. This is it. A proclamation of the mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma proclaiming Friday, March 8, 2019, as Women's Day, and the month of March, 2019, as Women's History Month in the city of Norman. Whereas International Women's Day is observed annually on March 8 and is global celebration of the social, economic, cultural, and political achievements of women, as well as a call to action for accelerating gender parity. And whereas 2019's theme for International Women's Day is Balance for Better and focuses on establishing gender balance in business, government, employment, wealth, and media and sports coverage. Whereas since its inception as Women's History Week in 1981, Women's History Month recognizes, honors, and celebrates the achievement of American women. And whereas 2019 National Theme for Women's History Month, Visionary Women, Champions of Peace and Nonviolence, honors women who have led efforts to end war, violence, and injustice, and pioneered the use of nonviolence to change society. And whereas the influence and accomplishment of women demonstrating leadership and professionalism in our community have contributed to our community in all aspects of life, including the arts, education, medicine, business, government, and religion, and have continued to make Norman a safe, thriving, and vibrant community. Now therefore I, mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim Friday, March 8, 2019, as Women's Day, and the month of March, 2019, as Women's History Month in the city of Norman, and invite all citizens to join me in celebrating the contributions and accomplishments of women in our community. I think we have Dr. Alyssa Thason, Acting Director of the Women's and Gender Study. Well, thank you so much for coming. We have a few words to say. Great. Thank you.
I'm honored to receive this proclamation from the city on behalf of the Women's and Gender Studies Department at the University of Oklahoma, where we are going to be celebrating and honoring some local women, women from Oklahoma, at our annual event which will take place this year on March 29, the Voices of Inclusion Gala that will be held at the Sam Noble Museum on the University of Oklahoma campus. International Women's Day has been celebrated since the 1910s, and Women's History Month has been celebrated in this country since the 1980s. And I'm very pleased that the city of Norman continues this tradition as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you. At this time, with the council's indulgence, I would like to move item 34 to this spot in the agenda. I know a number of people are here to hear our discussion about that, and so I want to move it ahead if I don't have any, if everyone's okay with that on the council. So at this time, item 34 is a resolution establishing a charter review commission for the purpose of conducting a targeted review of the Norman City Council Charter and to report its findings to City Council. Currently, there is a motion to adopt on the floor from the January 8 meeting. There are several amendments proposed, so with council's concurrence, we will take them one at a time and then receive public input. Councilmember Castleberry.
Mayor, we've had several requests for some amendments and some types of thing here. So I'm going to make a motion that we postpone this until April 4 for a study session so that all the council members can go over this. This charter review is not a mission-critical timing project that needs to be done tonight. And I think we've got some questions and some amendments, some good things that have been brought out by other council members. And so with council's indulgence, I'd like to postpone this until April 4, a study session, so we can kind of go over all those things and no more of death, instead of trying to legislate up here from the dais.
Second.
Just as a matter of some explanation, there were a number of amendments that were kind of occurring up here on the dais before we got started. And it seems like it's really important for us to go back and have a substantial discussion about this before we try to take any kind of vote. Are there any questions or comments from council regarding this amendment? Questions or comments? The motion on the floor is to postpone item 34 to April 2 for a study session.
Thursday.
For April 4 for a study session. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast, and the motion passes by a vote of seven to one, voting against Councilmember Scott.
This brings us back to the consent docket. Item number five is, this item is placed on the agenda so the City Council, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine agenda items that they wish to be approved or acknowledged by one motion. I need a motion to place items 6A through 31 on the consent docket. Do I have a second?
Second. Second.
Second.
All those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed? Same sign? That was unanimous. Item 6A is an ordinance upon first reading rezoning 421 West Gray Street from CCB-C Center City Form-Based Code to CCPUD Center City Planned Unit Development, 421 West Gray Street. Item 6 is submission of the Finance Director's Investment Report as of January 31, 2019. Item 7, submission of the monthly departmental reports for the month of January 2019. Item 8 is submission of the City Manager's Change Order Report. Item 9 is an easement acceptance, is an acceptance of a permanent utility easement from the Department of Mental Health and Substance Abuse Services in the amount of $137,040 for the 24th Avenue East Bond Project from Lindsay Street to Robinson Street. Item 10 is the acceptance of a permanent utility easement from the Department of Mental Health and Substance Abuse Services in the amount of $7,380 for the 24th Avenue East Bond Project from Lindsay Street to Robinson Street. Item 11 is also the acceptance of a permanent easement from the Oklahoma Department of Mental Health in the amount of $70,480 for the 24th Avenue East Bond Project from Lindsay to Robinson. Item 12 is the acceptance of a permanent public easement donated by the Board of Regents of the University of Oklahoma for the segment D Waterline Project along Timberdale Road between Chautauqua Avenue and Jenkins. Item 13 is the acceptance of a request for proposal and approval of a contract and subsequent bonds with Playwell Group Playworks, Inc., in the amount of $174,000 for the Prairie Creek Park Project and the adoption of the project agent resolution. Item 14 is authorization for the expenditure number one under the contract with Smith Roberts Land Service in an amount not to exceed $54,324 to provide right-of-way acquisition services for the 36th Avenue Northwest Widening Project Phase One. Item 15 is amendment number two to a contract with ADG, increasing the contract amount by $1,411,727 for a revised contract amount of $3,289,408.14 to provide additional program management services for current projects and program management services for additional Norman Forward projects, being Ruby Grant Park, Park Maintenance Building, and Adult Softball and Football Complex, and budget appropriation from the Norman Forward Fund Balance. Item 16 is amendment number three to a contract with Fries &amp; Nichols, increasing the contract amount by $20,000 for a revised contract of $156,600 to provide assistance with utility billing implementation. Item 17 is amendment number one to a contract with Tyler Technologies, increasing the contract amount by $49,500 for a revised contract amount of $2,423,269 to provide additional professional services for installation, configuration, data conversion, training, and project management of enterprise resource planning, and municipal court management software. Item 18 is final acceptance and final payment of a contract with Lippert Brothers for the Norman Forward Griffin Park Phase One Northfield Improvements Project. Number 19 is addendum number one to a contract with Ball Clubs of Norman for the use of baseball complex at Reeves Park. Item 20 is a contract with Cardinal Engineering in the amount of $90,400 to provide engineering design, bidding, and construction management services for the Interstate Drive Waterline Replacement Project. Item 21 is a contract with Pepsi Beverages Company for the exclusive sale of Pepsi products at various concession operations throughout the Parks and Recreation Department, and acceptance of a signing bonus in the amount of $10,000 from Pepsi Beverages Company and a budget appropriation. Item 22 is a contract with AfterTech Computer Recycling for recycling of city surplus computer and electronic equipment for a period of three years. Item 23 is a contract with Francis Solar and Electric Vehicles Systems Provider to submit a grant to the Oklahoma Department of Environmental Quality to be used to build electric charging stations at four locations in the city of Norman. Item 24 is a project agreement with the Oklahoma Department of Transportation, ODOT, for the 24th Avenue Northwest and T-Drive-T Circle Intersection Signalization and Widening Project in the amount of $338,720 for the city's local chair and adoption of Resolution R. 1819-81. Item 24 is a contract, a project agreement with the Oklahoma Department of Transportation for the Traffic Signal Upgrade Project Emergency Vehicle Preemption System Phase One and adoption of Resolution R. 1819-82. Item 26 is a contract with Interpersonal Frequency in the amount of $243,750 to provide website evaluation, content management, and redesign of the city of Norman's website. Item 27 is a resolution authorizing compromise settlement of the claims filed by Lenny Bryan Mulder under the Oklahoma Workers' Compensation Statutes in Lenny Bryan Mulder versus the City of Norman. Workers' Compensation Claim directing the legal department to file settlement in Workers' Compensation Court and authorizing and directing the Finance Director to purchase Workers' Compensation Court judgment from the Risk Management Insurance Fund. Item 28 is a resolution appropriating $11,615.52 from the refunds, reimbursements, miscellaneous risk management account received from the insurance companies and the responsible party to repair and replace traffic signal equipment and traffic signs damaged in traffic accidents. Item 29 is a resolution donating used body armor and other surplus equipment to the Jones Oklahoma Police Department. Item 30 is a resolution urging the Oklahoma State Legislature to pass House Bill 2456, creating the Youth Mental Health Protection Act prohibiting healthcare and mental health professionals from providing conversion therapy to persons under 18. Item 31 is a resolution adopting the Stormwater Division Policy Manual dated February 2019, contingent on voter approval of ordinance 01819-28. I need a motion to approve or reject the consent docket.
Motion to approve.
Again.
At this time, I would like to have Carrie Evenson, the Stormwater Manager, come up and make a brief presentation on item 31. I thought this was very important. You all have done a lot of work, and we get questions about it when we're out talking about the upcoming bond issues.
We want to know, we want the public to know that we have this manual.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you, Mayor and council. Just to give you a little bit of background on this Stormwater Policy Manual, it all started back in April 2017, council study session on what to do with the next steps for stormwater funding. And it started with the appointment of the Stormwater Citizen Committee, more involvement with the citizens in Norman to get input, feedback on how to proceed with our needs for stormwater funding. And then it really resolved down into policy development and making sure that we had all of the pieces in place when we tried this again. And so with our vision for Norman, part of this is having some of these policies in place that are part of this policy manual. So some of the policies that were identified, that we needed to consider and include as appropriate in the policy manual, an appeals process for the stormwater utility, a credit application process, if it was applicable, no credits at this point other than the low-income credit, and that process has been formalized. Streamlining corridors, water quality protection zones, that's already completed and in our ordinance. But you will see in the policy manual, in the Stormwater Quality section, some details on how we handle enforcement of that ordinance, structural and nonstructural controls, which are basically our maintenance policies and procedures. Dam safety is in there as well, and then the enhanced maintenance of creeks and detention ponds. And that's really morphed into our Neighborhood Assistance Program that would be funded as part of the stormwater utility. And that's in the Stormwater Utility section of the manual. So with that, we proposed one, to have one source for all of these policies. So instead of trying to find them in various different places, we'd have them all in one manual. We discussed that in July 2018, and the final draft of the policy manual was presented last Tuesday to council in a study session. There are five major sections. There's the Stormwater Maintenance Policies, the Stormwater Quality Policies, Flood Plane Management, which is also under the Stormwater Division. A lot of people don't realize that that's part of that, but we deal with the Flood Plane Permit Committee and process those applications in my division. We also have the Stormwater Utility Policies that we talked about, Neighborhood Assistance, and the Appeals Process. And then we have emergency preparedness and response, and that's really how do we internally in my division deal with spills when we're called out to address them. So a quick summary of what's in there. If you have questions, I'd be happy to take any.
I just want to say how much I appreciate. I know the staff's really been working on this for a couple of years, and I think it really helps us answer questions for the public because they're wondering, okay, if we're going to pay for this bond, if we're going to have a utility, what does that mean? And have you done the policies? And I think you all have done a really good job of that, and I appreciate all the hard work. Where can people, if this is approved tonight, where can people find a copy of the manual?
So we will put it on our Stormwater Pages on the city's website, and then we will also make sure that we update Vision for Norman and have the final policies there. We'd already had links to both the draft appeals process and the draft Neighborhood Assistance Program. So we will put a link out there to the final document as well tomorrow.
Okay. Great. Councilmember Clark. And then, and then Roll. Okay.
That was essentially my question, Mayor, of where can the residents find this? So I'll just say, thank you for all your hard work, Carrie.
Thank you. Councilmember Castleberry.
Yeah, thank you for putting all this together. I know this is an important thing from the last time. And I like everything in there. I was just a little concerned about the wording here says contingent on the voting. Even if it fails, do we not need this? I mean, let me ask you, so can we approve it not subject to contingent? And it just wouldn't have a funding source? I mean, I think these policies are things we want to do anyway. So walk me through the process of why the contingent? I mean...
Right. And Catherine can help me out on this when I stumble. But the main thing was, we wanted, because the appeals process and the Neighborhood Assistance Program are dependent on the utility, there will be no funding source without it. We made it contingent upon that passage, and we can look at that. And the other policies are, and procedures are things that we are doing now, we're implementing now. So we can look at...
I guess my question for the city attorney is, if we took the word contingent out, I mean, so I think I want to, would like to see us maybe adopt this. And if we have Neighborhood Assistance Program and Appeals Process, it would be in there. We just don't have a funding source. I mean, I'd say that it's an unfunded mandate, so to speak. Federal government does all the time. But I think we've got something. I just want us to revisit this if this should fail a year from now and we do it again. So is there...
The reason we did that is we didn't want to get in the position, especially on the Neighborhood Assistance Program, where neighborhoods were coming to us with applications and asking for funds.
Well, they could. We'd say we don't have any money.
Right. When we don't have the money. So I think what, if we left contingent in here in the wording of the resolution, my suggestion would be if it fails, to come back to you with a policy manual that takes out those pieces that were dependent on the stormwater utility rate.
Okay. I'm fine with that. Thank you.
Councilmember Hick... No. Any other questions or comments from the council? All right. Thank you, Carrie.
Thank you.
The motion on the floor is to approve the consent docket. Councilmembers, you may cast your vote.
All votes have been cast, and the motion to approve the consent docket passes unanimously.
This brings us to item 32, which is, no? Cross talking. Okay. Item 32 is an ordinance amending the city code to add article, what article is this? Article 19 to Chapter 10 titled Utility Vegetation Management and Setting Fourth Notice Requirements and Best Management Practices for Vegetation Management and Maintenance Activities by Utility Companies Operating in the Public Rights of Way. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on second reading.
Motion. Motion to adopt.
Second. At this time, I would like to recognize our interim city attorney, Catherine.
And if I could get Bryce to pull up the PowerPoint, he's going to help me kind of get this going. So these amendments were discussed, actually, late last, late summer of 2017, early fall of 2017, as possible amendments to the OG&E franchise. There were a couple of issues primarily that were brought up, and this was making sure property owners had sufficient notice and property owners' desire to know what chemicals were being used to handle that vegetation management. As we worked through this in this Community Planning and Transportation Committee, we talked a lot about the state and federal regulations and how we could operate within those regulations. And we wanted to really improve the communication efforts between staff and the utility companies, and that's already happening with regular meetings with our major utility companies so that we can kind of get ahead of these issues and answer citizens' questions. So the existing regulations are in state and federal law for public utilities, electric utilities. The focus of those regulations is really on rate fairness and reliability of the grid. For technology utilities, they're more governed by the FCC, and the focus there is getting the technology to the customers and the consumers as fast as possible. So that's the framework we're working under. And this ordinance, we'll go to the next slide, this ordinance will adopt a local regulatory framework that will be consistent with both state and federal law in attempts to address some of the concerns expressed by citizens and by council members. It adds Article 9 to Chapter 10, which is the Health and Safety Section of the city's code, and it will apply only to vegetation management activities by utilities. Let me go to the next one. In this ordinance, it will require the utilities to submit their maintenance plan to the city so that we have that information, that that plan will identify areas that are scheduled for maintenance. It'll identify a certified arborist to serve as a contact person, and any contractors that will be used for that maintenance. It also addresses, on the next slide, Bryce, the notice to owners and residents that you have to give prior notification. That's a Corporation Commission regulation, but we're also adopting it within this ordinance. That can be door hangers, mailed letters, posted signs, any way to get that notice to the property owner and the residents. If a resident wants to meet with the utility company in this ordinance, it says that they need to make every reasonable effort to have that meeting and meet with the resident to discuss any concerns they may have. It addresses... It addresses notice in situations of emergency, ice storms, weather events, things like that. And that notice is just as much as reasonable and possible, given the emergency. Obviously, the goal is to get things cleaned up and get the power or the utility back up and running as quickly as possible in those situations. As far as dangerous trees go, they don't have to give notice to the city to take out a dangerous tree, but they still have to provide a notice to the owner or resident of the property on which the dangerous tree is sitting. This ordinance also adopts best management practices using the ANSI A300 standards. These are standards created by arborists for utility companies. We incorporated the pruning standards explicitly. We talk about chemical control methods. Those are really governed by Title II of the Oklahoma statutes. But we do have in there some of the provisions in Title II about how that gets sprayed, making sure, you know, you're aware of the weather conditions and so overspraying doesn't occur, things like that. It also requires the utility to supervise the contractors they're using. We talked a lot in the committee about identification more recently because of some incidences in town where someone was impersonating a utility company employee in a burglary. And so the provision there is everyone has to be wearing identification for planned maintenance, emergency maintenance, so they'll have some identification. But planned maintenance, they're going to have identification that matches the company they're working for, the actual utility. As far as vegetation cleanup, that's another issue we hear about a lot. Any pruning activities will be cleaned up the same day. And then if they're using chemical control methods, because those take longer to be effective, if a property owner requests to come back and clean that up within 120 days, they will do so. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions or comments from the audience?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm Harold Hyple, 2011 Morgan Drive, Norman. And I want to emphasize very strongly for the record, I am not speaking for Oklahoma Electric Cooperative. I say that because 14 months ago, I ended a 35-year stint as the attorney for OEC. And I just want to be sure that everybody understands, I'm speaking now as somebody that's got an awful lot of experience in the easement business and the relationship with cities, and also the fact that since I wrote the franchise that OEC has for, with the city of Norman, as approved by the voters, which is not a whole lot like what OG&E has. My question is, at this point, has the written documents that are up here been presented to a group of representatives from both OG&E and representatives from OEC and vetted?
I'd be happy to answer that. Yes, I worked with representatives from both OG&E and OEC to develop the ordinance. I think we've got a representative from OG&E here, and I saw a representative from OEC here. And that was their vegetation management personnel working in that group to develop this ordinance.
And they got to see the language with this thing. Thank you very much. That's.
I have a cistern in my backyard, and they called us and said they would be there, and it worked out fine. I just wanted to say that proper notification, all that, and we're just perfectly happy with that. I have something different, though. In my neighborhood, I don't know if this pertains to the TV companies or what, but he and his wife were gone for half the day, and the television company came in to his backyard, took his hinges off his gate, and laid it aside, and did maintenance or whatever they had to do to the cable for the TV company. It's in his backyard, and his backyard is fenced and gated. So I'm just curious if this, it's a utility of sorts, but would this be under the purview of this item here with utilities? I probably don't think so. You're addressing city utilities, evidently water and sewer and those kinds of things. So am I off base a little bit to say that this, the relationship would relate somehow because they're supposed to call before they come in? And they weren't home for half the day, and they had come in and taken the gate down, didn't put the gate back up. So my question was there, if any coverage relates to this.
Yeah, this ordinance only relates to vegetation in the rights of way. Typically, OEC and OG&E are your operators there, but it could be other companies, but it's just the vegetation management piece.
That's what I sort of thought, but I guess there's no consideration of Cox and the others coming into the backyards.
Typically, if they have an easement, they have a right to access that easement.
They do.
Taking the gate off is a little unusual unless they have to get equipment in through there.
Yes, I thought so.
And oftentimes, when you sign an agreement for that service in your home, there's language in that agreement.
That's true, but they do have the, there is the consideration to call. So I'll just go back to him and talk to him and tell him to call him again. All right, thank you.
Any other comments from the audience? Counsel? Final questions or comments? Councilmember Hickman.
I just wanted to thank staff for the hard work on this. This was an initiative that went through the Community Planning and Transportation Committee, which several of us are on that committee. And I know we spent a lot of time and effort working on this, and I appreciate representatives from OEC and OG&E engaging in the conversations and working with us. I think that this lays a good foundation for our continued discussions with OG&E on the franchise agreement, because this was a part of the discussions when we were discussing the franchise agreement about having a generally applicable ordinance for vegetation management in the rights of way. So again, thanks Catherine and the staff for all their hard work on this, and I'm excited that we're getting this taken care of.
The motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on second reading. By show of hands, all those in favor? Opposed, same sign? That was unanimous. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on final reading.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Councilmembers, you may cast your votes. Passed, and the motion to adopt the ordinance upon final reading passes unanimously. Item 33 is an ordinance amending the city code by adding article 10 to chapter 10, establishing regulations to protect healthy and significant trees in the right of way, providing provisions for applications to remove trees. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on second reading, section by section.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
At this time, I'd like to recognize Judd Foster, Director of Parks and Recreation.
My pleasure to do a short summary of what is proposed as ordinance 181934 that we have commonly referred to as the Tree Ordinance. This ordinance begins actually about a year ago when the city council approaches the tree board and asked for some research and a draft proposal for an ordinance that would work in Norman. Results of that research were presented and discussed to the Planning and Transportation Committee on May 24th, and then again on October 25th last year, and then presented to the entire council at a study session on December 11th. The, there's been extensive work on this, and also, as in the previous item, this work has been vetted by representatives of the developers' council, and with a lot of input, and finally, agreement from those groups as well. The purpose of the ordinance basically is preserve, replace, and protect trees that are in the public right of way, road, street right of ways, eliminate unnecessary removal of healthy trees, which is felt obviously to enhance property values and the aesthetics of our city. Also, there's language in the ordinance that provides for a property owner to request and nominate a tree for historical significance that can be, once that's approved by a city forester, then that designation is filed with the property owner's property deeds and survives through the resale of that property until such time as it were ever to be removed. If the tree were to be, to die or become diseased, it could be removed from that. But it's a way for a property owner to protect a tree that's not in the right of way, that has historical significance or is of a certain size or a certain character or other qualifying factors. So there were a number of ordinances that were gathered by the tree board members from other cities and studied. And then sections of those that were felt to be appropriate for Norman were put together to form this ordinance. Throughout the ordinance, there's a, the role of a city forester position is emphasized to carry out the responsibilities and authority of the ordinance. And it forms a formal process on a case-by-case basis for residents to have evaluations done on removal of a tree or trimming of a tree. So also, it's written to be in line with other city codes, existing ordinances that takes into account site triangles and other, like planting requirements and other things like that that exist in other ordinances. So the city forester, through the ordinance, is given the authority to evaluate different requests, determine fines up to, potentially up to $2,000 for unauthorized removal of a tree or trees, and also credits that can be used to offset those fines by replanting trees on a caliber inch basis. So if trees, pardon me, if trees are removed, they can be replaced in other locations or similar locations on a caliber inch comparison. And the forester also evaluates the health of a tree upon request. A tree that's in poor health, or obviously a tree that's dead, or a tree that may be diseased, could be determined to be those conditions that authorize approval or removal without any kind of a fine. The ordinance, as also in the previous item, allows for emergency removal and trimming in the event of weather-related damage from ice storms or wind or tornado, those kinds of widespread damage without forester approval. Some other uses that are covered include not being, or restricting attaching objects to trees that are in the right of way, paving restrictions or protection around the root zone of trees that are in construction zones to protect them from damage caused by heavy equipment or other vehicles. And then other trimming practices are discussed. And also, I mentioned again, the historic tree application that attaches to a property owner's deed and stays or lives with the land as it moves forward. The ordinance is drafted for a specific area of the city. The area is, in this case, from 48th West to East to 36th East, and then from Franklin Road south to the Canadian River. Doesn't apply to the rural properties. The reason for this is to focus on the more intensely developed areas that are more likely to have tree removal and trimming because of sidewalks and streets and things of that sort. Does not apply to trees, street trees that are smaller than six inches in diameter, and also to branches that are less than four inches in diameter. And I've mentioned the historic tree designation already. And finally, the, there is provision for appeals to a forester's decision, should they desire to be appealed by a property owner, first to the city manager and then on to the city council for a final decision. Another important point is to make is that this ordinance does not intend to take away any of the rights provided by state law that the utility companies have to work within their easements and right of way. And with that, I'll take any questions. And also, Don Menzey and Will Spain with the tree board are here. They did most of this work in preparing this and worked very hard on this project, and I know they are here to answer any questions as well.
Okay. Councilmember Bearman.
Judd, I have one question for you. Can you explain to me, in section 10-1003A, it says, "It shall be unlawful for any person to intentionally alter any street tree standing or growing wholly or in part in any right of way." What do you mean by in part, and what part of the tree?
Taking off any branch.
But I mean, what constitutes in part of the right of way? So if a tree is growing on private property, but the branches hang into the right of way, is that considered?
No, no, the trunk of the tree needs to be either totally in the right of way or partially in the right of way. Some of them are split by the right of way line.
Okay, but it's not branches. It's like the base of the tree.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Castleberry.
Good work on all this, but I had a couple of questions when we were going through study sessions, and one of them, I never got clear in my mind, is on the historical tree designation, if I put the application in and I get a tree on my property designated as a historical tree, and I later on change my mind, was there a process for that? I didn't see a process, I can see where, if it dies or something like that, but.
There is. I believe the owner can basically reverse the process. The same owner that did the application, I think, can have it removed. Has to be through an approval process through the forester.
Okay, is that in here?
Am I saying that right, Catherine? I think that's correct.
We added some language, not quite for this situation. It was really for subsequent owners, if there was some issue with the tree and you wanted the historical tree designation removed. And so if you look on page 33-17, this is in section 13 of the ordinance, section 10-1012 of the code, subsection E, we say, "The city shall be named a party to such deed restrictions and shall explicitly be empowered to release the restrictions provided herein. And then it may be released in that section below under those certain circumstances." It didn't really, we didn't contemplate the person requesting the deed restriction to come back and ask for it to be released. And with the city being a party to that, the city would have to approve that.
That's my only question, because I mean, I could see that I designate this tree as a historical tree and stuff like this, and I want to sell my property to somebody who wants to do something else with it. And they say, "Your property is worthless if I can't remove that tree." And you say, "Well, I want that tree, you know, and I want to sell my, I want to sell my property. I've decided I want to sell my property. It's, they're going to give me a bunch of money for it. I'm going to be able to retire and all that kind of stuff. I've got my property right." And so, well, the tree is right there in the middle, and unless we can take that tree down, your property is worthless to us. In that situation, if they wanted to, hopefully they wouldn't, but if they wanted to, it's me, I see as a little bit unintended consequence of maybe it was a historical tree at the time, or a subsequent owner, it's like, it was historical to the people that bought it before because they planted it when they got married and they thought it was something new. It has no significance to me, but it's on the deed. And so, I don't know how, the situation. And so, I don't know how, the situation that would be handled.
As I understand that, what was just described, you could apply, or basically request that the restriction be removed, or the designation, I'm sorry, be removed.
But if it still met those criteria...
Then, as I understand, that the applicant would, would have an option to appeal to the city manager and city council, and see if they could get it removed.
Okay, so there's, there's a process for, that's my only concern. I never, I was unclear if there's a process to change your mind, or if this is a revocable decision.
Yeah, if it was denied because it didn't meet one of these criteria in subsection F, then the owner could appeal that, and the next section, 10-1013, to the city manager. And the city manager has 10 days to grant relief. And if they don't like what the city manager does with that, they can appeal to city council.
But that's if it was denied.
That's if it was denied.
But if it was approved?
If it was approved, the restriction would be removed.
Oh, I got you.
Yeah.
I guess, kind of going along with that, what I was thinking more of is that changes in the tree, not, it could still be very healthy, but one of the biggest problems in the older area of town is roots, and that the roots of the trees go under the sidewalks, and they go under driveways, and they go under foundations. And if that happened, I mean, it could get to the point where you, it's a property problem. It's damaging. So I just want to make sure that there is a way in those instances that, and you feel like what you read earlier would apply to that.
Yeah, you know, if it's an imminent hazard to life or property, and the tree's got to be removed or altered to mitigate that, I think that covers, if it's going, you know, you have roots damaging a house foundation, and if it's located on a public right-of-way or easement, so that sidewalks, things like that, I think, I think those would cover those situations.
Okay, and then my final comment was, and it's not enough for me to vote no on this, but I was a little concerned that the city forester is the only one that really has, or that does need, it's to do this. I would have liked to see a certified arborist, because this kind of tells me that we are going to have a city forester. We're going to have to be, we're going to require to have a city forester in order to administer this, as opposed to, if it's a certified arborist, who cares whether they work for the city or not? But that was, I wish we would have put that in there, that a qualified person can make that decision, whether they are actually on a cease payroll or not.
Councilmember Clark.
Thank you, Mayor. The question that I had brought up in committee was about beautiful trees. That's a big reason why people move to, I think, Cor Norman and areas with the trees. But let's say someone has a child that is severely allergic to one of these trees, and it says, one of the exemptions, "An imminent hazard to life or property." And I just want to make sure that that would fall under that category. Okay, so that, that, thank you for making that adjustment. That satisfied my concerns with that.
Any other questions, comments? This is an opportunity for members of the audience to ask questions or make comments.
Good evening. My name is Mary Hogan. I live at 1232 East Louisiana Street. Now, I actually have contacted a few of you with concerns about this ordinance. Unfortunately, I happen to be the owner of a number of trees, which in the past have been subject to city right-of-way citations. Now, while we have discovered that that right-of-way is not actually a true city right-of-way, and I could fight it legally, other homeowners are not going to have that opportunity. If you have planted trees along an alley to stifle noise, we're going to get caught by this. Now, I'd like to point out that unfortunately, this relies very heavily on a city forester position. It has not been filled, so we don't have anybody to contact. So when it comes to exemptions such as which diseases constitute a hazard to basically community trees, we don't have any reference. For certain foresters, diseases have to be wind-borne or insect-borne to constitute, or in effect, basically, an industry. Whereas I have fungal problems on a few trees that unfortunately can't even spread to my front yard, so I would have no guarantee that that would fall under that jurisdiction. I have nobody to contact with no city forester. And I also noticed there's no qualifications, which has been brought up. So you could put anyone in that position, and I wouldn't know how they would decide. But basically, I like this ordinance for city properties. It's great for parks, it's great for city easements. But when you come onto our private properties, it really does concern me. You know, we have to deal with the diseases, the maintenance, the trimming that's cost to us. So, you know, I like it for those reasons, but not when it comes onto our properties. Just like the Arbor Day Foundation points out in their sample ordinance, that they only apply it to areas in between property lines. So, and I think that's really the best way to go. I realize that this may not be considered, but it's kind of putting a burden on those of us who have trees instead of Bermuda grass. So hopefully, you all will take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. But this is in the public right-of-way. It's not, yeah, it's not on private property.
All right, just to clarify, this ordinance applies to street trees, which are defined as a tree of a certain size, six inches DBH, which is the tree diameter, or more, which is between the publicly dedicated sidewalk and the publicly dedicated street surface, or where there is no sidewalk, then within six feet of the edge of the street surface. So it's not talking about trees in your backyard, and it's not talking about trees, generally speaking, outside of the city right-of-way.
Unless you have asked to have the tree have historical designation.
I wanted to clarify that we abut directly against an alley, which the city has treated that, because they do fall within six feet of that alley. However, that alley, according to your county assessor's office, is entirely private property. But for other homeowners, I know that their alleys are public. It will in fact catch our backyard trees.
I'm not sure this ordinance would impact that, but you do have to keep the right-of-way clear for clearance of vehicles. Usually, in the alleyways, it's our sanitation trucks.
Yeah, that's what we've been cited for previously. But it does state right-of-way and six feet in.
It's the space between the publicly dedicated sidewalk and the publicly dedicated, publicly dedicated street surface. So I think the intent is the front yard.
And unfortunately, working in government while intense may be great. It's the letter of the law that I know is going to be enforced. That's how your code enforcement enforces it. Thanks.
Well, street and alley don't have the same definition.
Right.
So this applies to streets, not to alleys. Any other public comment?
Councilmember Hickman.
I just wanted to, this is another policy initiative that came through the Committee of Planning and Transportation Committee. Wanted to thank all the council members that served on that committee. We put a lot of hard work and effort into this. Also, thank the Tree Board folks. I know they put a lot of hard work into working on this policy, and staff for bringing this together. I know it's been, seems like at least a year that we've been working on this, this initiative. And so, really pleased to see that we are getting this passed and moving this forward, and scratching it off the list of things to get done. And I know it's one of the things that, when Councilmember Carter ran for office and got on council, was also part of the Save the Trees initiatives in the city of Norman. So I'm really pleased to see that we're getting this done, and appreciate all the collaborative effort we had with the developer community, the builder community as well, with our citizens. So thank, thank you, everybody.
Any other council comments? As always, we appreciate all the staff work that was done on this. They spend a lot of time researching what's done in, in other cities, and what works, and what doesn't work, to try to come up with what fits for our community. And I think that's always appreciated. I'll entertain a mo, no? I thought we'd already done that. Motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on second reading. By show of hands, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Those opposed, same sign. That was unanimous. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on final reading.
Motion to adopt.
Second. Motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on final reading. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes. All votes have been cast, and the motion to adopt the ordinance upon final reading passes unanimously. We have already covered item 34. So we are now to miscellaneous discussion. This is an opportunity for citizens to address city council. Remarks should be directed to the council as a whole and limited to five minutes or less. What is she doing?
Bible 2011, Morgan Drive. I want to say thank you to Councilman Castleberry for making the motion to postpone 34, and all of you for supporting that motion. I don't think a lot of you have been through in the past what we call amending major ordinances on the fly. Well, that can turn into a real circus just with, with one ordinance. Your item 34 has 12 separate subdivisions under five, which means there could be 12 different topics to the city charter, which are, for which amendments will be suggested. And there may be more than one to each one of those. My point is this, if it's your amendment, please, put it in the writing that you are willing to accept, and get that writing published on the city website and the newspaper and wherever else, so people can come being worked up with, being with knowledge of what you're talking about. Because without that, it's, with one ordinance, it's a zoo. With 12 of them, it can be just a Chinese fire drill. So please, you've got the right to amend it and do so, but bring it, bring it in writing and give it to us ahead of time.
Good evening. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm Shane Dodson. May remember, I've been up here once before. I'm a husband and father and a co-manager of a small business here in Norman. I'm a citizen here in Norman. I'm a follower of Jesus Christ, and it's as a Christian that I'm appealing to you once again tonight. I've addressed this council before, once before, and I reminded you that the Bible commands you as civil magistrates to obey Christ and to submit unto him, not only as your personal, not only your personal lives, but also as members of this city council. Most every day in the city of Norman, a man, Dr. Larry Burns, murders children under the protection of law. Now, I say law, but Roe v. Wade is not strictly speaking law. As I'm sure we all remember from Civics 101, it's not the judicial branch that makes laws, but the legislative. Congress makes laws, not courts. Courts interpret. And there is no amount of interpretation of the Constitution that should allow for human beings to be legally considered to be less than human, and therefore, not worthy of protection. It's been tried in this nation before, when black people were considered subhuman, and therefore, could be considered property. Fortunately, individual states, such as Wisconsin, stood up to the Supreme Court and protected life. In this case, in that case, the life of those who were enslaved. It has been tried in Germany, where Jews, gypsies, and homosexuals were considered subhuman, so they could be legally and systematically exterminated. I think we all know how the rest of the world, most of the rest of the world, thought about that and what the response was. My friends, we have a similar situation here today. Preborn children have been legally declared subhuman, and therefore, can be killed. The killing may be done in sterile offices in nice neighborhoods by medical professionals, and it may even, may even be considered lawful in the eyes of many citizens. But according to the law of God and the light of nature, it is unlawful. Just as in 1855, as I mentioned before, the state of Wisconsin stood up to the Supreme Court in declaring the Fugitive Slave Act as unconstitutional, I urge you, ladies and gentlemen, to stand up to wicked federal decrees. The Fugitive Slave Act required the return of runaway slaves to their owners. The local magistrates of Wisconsin refused to enforce this act, and eventually, the evil of slavery was abolished. If local, if enough local magistrates stand up to the Supreme Court and declare that the murder of preborn children will no longer be allowed within their area of authority, we will eventually see abortion abolished. Now, you may be asking, well, what can we do? What can I do as a city council, as a member of the city council? Well, if you're serious about that question, and I hope and pray that you are, I would love to sit down and with you to discuss it. I know the elders of my church, I go to Christ, the King Presbyterian Church here in Norman. My elders would love to sit down with you and discuss it. As I mentioned before, I personally have seen various cities declare themselves as sanctuary cities. For instance, for undocumented immigrants in protest to the immigration policy by our president. So perhaps that's a possibility. But in any case, if you wanted to discuss strategies, I would love to take the time to do that with you. Meantime, though, I thank you for your time, and I, may God bless you as you continue to serve Norman.
Okay, that brings us to, oh.
Can you hear me?
Could you get it a little closer?
Is that better?
Yeah, that's good.
Thank you. Thank you for taking my comment. I'm Chris Nanny, 1815 Lakehurst Drive. I ride the buses every day in the city of Norman, and I've received lots of comments and questions from passengers, and especially from bus employees that are worried about their positions. So I'm asking for an update on the status of the transfer of the bus system from OU to the city of Norman. Thanks.
Okay, we will, we will get that to you, and maybe we will put something on our city Facebook. Switched date. Okay, we have, we can't remember the date, but there is a study session that, that we will be discussing this and update everybody. So would that work for you?
Sure, do you know when the...
March 12th, I'm told.
Okay, so March 12th is the date of the study session?
Right, and we will, we will be getting an update on the conversations that have been going on.
Okay, and the, and the public is invited to the study session, or can attend?
Oh, absolutely.
The study session. All right, oh, that's very good news. I'll, I'll pass that on to the passengers and the bus employees.
Okay, thank you. Okay, all right. Let's take comments from the council. Councilmember Bierman, I'm going to start with you.
All right.
Newly elected councilmember Bierman for a second term.
That's right. So I just have a couple of things. I'm sure these are probably on other people's lists as well. But the Criminal Justice Forum will be held this Thursday at 6:00 PM at the Central Library. Particularly pertinent right now, they'll be talking about fines, fees, bail, and pre-trial release, and considering the recent Supreme Court decision on excessive fines. I think this will be quite interesting. The Oklahoma Policy Institute, ACLU, and Oklahomans for Criminal Justice Reform will be speaking. Also, on March 15th at 10:00 AM, we have the Senior Visioning Conference to talk about the senior center and what everyone would like to see in the senior center. So I encourage everyone to attend. I will be there, and looking forward to getting all the feedback I can. And then lastly, I know this is going to be after our next council meeting, but Councilmember Clark and I are going to be hosting a joint ward meeting on March 25th at Fire Station Number Nine at 6:00 PM to talk Vision for Norman. That'll be just a little less, little more than a week before the vote on April 2nd. So I encourage everyone to come out. I'm also going to try and hold another meeting at some point to kind of make sure that I can gather as much feedback as possible. I'll also be probably doing a Facebook Live Town Hall, just trying to reach people wherever they are in the method that best suits them. So Monday, the 25th, Fire Station Number Nine, 6:00 PM. I am also going to be... I am also going to be asking my babysitter to come. So if you have kids and you want to go, Fire Station Number Nine's not the most fun place, but sitter can walk people, walk kids over to the library maybe and, you know, keep them occupied for a couple hours. So looking forward to seeing everyone and we'll see you in a couple weeks.
We just put it on the calendar. Councilmember Carter.
Just a brief comment to say my personal thanks and appreciation to staff, Judd in particular, Catherine, those guys back there, Will and Don, utility companies, and Councilmember Hickman, who literally, you guys literally poured yourself into these vegetation ordinances and the tree ordinances over the last year and, you know, really reached out and blended the, you know, all of the competing interests into something that is really something I think the city of Norman can be proud of. And, you know, my voyage into public service was really precipitated by the trees being removed on Lindsay Street, I mean Berry Road. And, and so to see that kind of community cohesiveness come together, all broad spectrums to come up with some ordinances and the great work of staff in this city council, just want to say thank you very much. Really appreciate it.
Councilmember Castleberry.
I'm actually at a little bit of a loss of words here. I wasn't going to say anything, but I am going to say something. Sir, I want to apologize to you as several members of your city council, your public representatives, turned their back on you as you addressed us. I'm not saying I agree with you. I'm not saying I disagree with you, but this is the public's house. We have miscellaneous discussion at the end of every council meeting so that citizens can come up and address, in fact, he even says it, "address the council." We've had people come up here and play a violin and a trombone and we've had some crazy things come up here. But that's what this is about. We are elected to represent you and I am embarrassed that anybody would turn their back on any member of this community, saying anything, whether you agree with somebody or disagree with somebody. That is not public discourse. And I'm, trust me, if that's going to be our new standard, I'm going to be turning my back on a lot of people.
Councilmember Hickman.
Good evening. Thanks to everybody who's here tonight and for all the folks watching at home. It was a really very exciting night as the chair of the Community Planning and Transportation Committee. I really am excited about these two ordinances that we passed tonight and all the great work of the committee members and staff and the citizens who participated on those projects and a couple of agenda items we can scratch off the CPTC committee list, so I'm really excited about that as well. I just have a couple of announcements I wanted to make. This Friday, this Saturday, March second, is the original, Norman's original nighttime parade, the Mardi Gras Parade at seven P.M. here in historic downtown Norman. So I encourage you to come downtown on Main Street and enjoy the fun festivities of Norman's Mardi Gras Parade. It's usually a great lively, fun time and there are some great activities afterwards raising money for the Norman Music Festival as well as for Jazz in June. So you can come down to the parade, have a good time, and then go buy a ticket or buy your tickets in advance to support one of those other wonderful Norman events. The Mardi Gras Parade is always a wonderful time. I tell people it's where I met my rescue dog, Simba, who is now my permanent puppy. Through the Norman Animal Welfare, they usually always have adoptions available the night of Mardi Gras Parade. And I walked Simba in the Mardi Gras Parade last year and then adopted him a few months later. And so it's a great time, come downtown Norman. And then on Friday, March eighth, is the Second Friday Art Walk here also in historic downtown Norman in Ward Four. So please come down on Friday night, March eighth, support our local merchants, support our local artists, and have a great time. If you've not been to Art Walk, it's a wonderful time. If you have been to Art Walk, then you know it's a great time and an excellent opportunity to support our local merchants and local artists. So that's all I have for tonight and thanks everybody for tuning in.
Councilmember Clark.
Thank you. Welcome to the OU students. I like to say hello. It's that time of the year where we get some visitors. I appreciate you engaging in local government. It is the most important level of government because the decisions we make, even if you're temporary residents in Norman, will impact your everyday lives. So it's awesome that you're engaged in here and I hope you enjoyed it. I'm very excited about International Women's Day. I have a middle school outreach event with my program on campus, so I won't be able to celebrate the way I normally do, but I encourage you to get involved, spend some time donating. I know that the Women's Resource Center always needs a variety of different donations. Volunteer some time. I'm actually hosting a movie day or that afternoon with my students and we'll be watching Suffragette because this is the hundredth anniversary of our right to vote, which is a very big deal. So don't, don't forget important milestones like that. I also want to take a moment and send my appreciation to the Pioneer Library System for all of the wonderful events they held to celebrate Black History Month. Everything from the Crowns Tea to the Read-Ins, it's always wonderful. And next year I will make a concerted effort to make sure the city of Norman has our own events to celebrate it as well. And I know that we do partner with Pioneer Library Systems, but we can do more with that and kind of building off that. Thank you to the Brothers of Kappa Alpha Psi for hosting the Ebony Awareness Bowl here at City Hall. They also mentor middle school students here in Norman at Alcott and Irving and it was really neat to learn more about that and I was excited to be here and watch that. It was really impressive. I have some upcoming events as well. My colleagues have shared a lot of the amazing things happening in our town. I stand by the statement that if you are bored in Norman, you are not paying attention. On Saturday, March ninth, I have partnered with Councilmember Scott to do a cleanup of Sutton Wilderness. That's actually in Ward Eight, but Ward Six wraps around it. And we're happy to, anyone's welcome, kids of all ages. Parks and Rec and the Stormwater Division are helping us with supplies, so just bring, Karen, you're excited. I see that, okay. It'll be a good time, fingers crossed for good Oklahoma weather. But after that, we have another event just down the street at the Twelfth Avenue Rec Center. If you have been curious about the craze that is known as pickleball, here's your chance to learn more. Twelfth Avenue Rec Center from four to six, completely free to attend. They'll cover the rules. It is, it is a sport for all ages, all abilities. It's a whole lot of fun and a great way to kind of send winter off as we approach spring. So please stop by and check that out. And again, partnering with Councilmember Bierman for that ward meeting on Monday, March twenty-fifth at six P.M. at Fire Station Number Nine. I would encourage you all, especially you OU students, to register to vote here in Norman by March ninth. It's not a lifetime commitment. You can take your voter registration wherever you go. And we have an opportunity to stand up for our community and create and support a vision for Norman. One, it's not the sexiest vision because we're talking about infrastructure, but it's incredibly important. And I work on campus and I ask the students, what happens every time it rains in Norman? And even the students say, it floods. That is correct, it floods. And so a lot of the pieces of the stormwater bond and stormwater utility will help us with that. And we are the largest city in Oklahoma to not have a stormwater utility and we have an opportunity to not only continue investing in our transportation infrastructure, but also our stormwater infrastructure and water quality. And I encourage the student residents at the University of Oklahoma to join us in sharing in that vision. That's all I got, thank you.
Councilmember Holman.
I'm going to just continue right on with that same train of thought since you brought it up. So I represent the area in Norman where most of the university campus is inside of. And we had an election two weeks ago, a mayoral election and a city council election. Less than, in the precinct that is on campus, precinct thirteen, all the dorm towers, most of the fraternities and sororities are in this precinct. There were less than thirty votes cast two weeks ago for mayor and city council. Again, I represent that area on the council, less than thirty votes were cast. I was one of them because I live in that precinct. I live on, I live on College Street. My, my girlfriend was one of them. My cousin Kaylee, who lives in Headington Hall, she was one of them and I think a couple of her friends went as well. And her boyfriend, Scott Gibson, who is in the Lambda Chi fraternity. So I think I knew at least ten of the thirty people that voted personally. And, okay, and so it's really important that students vote in our local elections and overwhelmingly students don't because many OU students think that they're not going to be here for very long. But like Councilmember Rhea Clark mentioned, if you're going to live in Norman for two or three or four years or maybe longer, maybe you're going to go to graduate school here too, it's really worth it to become registered to vote here in Norman while you're living here. The decisions we make on this council impact your life while you're living in Norman. And like Councilmember Clark mentioned, when you move away, if you get a job in New York City or something, you can register to vote there. And it's free to register to vote and you can register to vote, re-register as many times as you want in your lifetime. So, and like I said, you could have a say in what goes on in Norman and maybe if you do that, you might feel like you want to stay here after you graduate, if you get an investment in the community that way. A couple of projects that I want to mention specifically where students will have an opportunity to have an impact and a vote on April second, there's a big transportation bond. There's nineteen projects in that bond. Three of them are going to directly impact the campus area. One of the projects is the number one project on the list and it's Jenkins Avenue from Lindsay Street all the way down to Lloyd Noble Center. We would be widening that to four lanes. It's currently two. It does not have bike lanes, it does not have drainage, and the sidewalk is not continuous. It would have the new green bike lanes, it would have a center median so cars can turn left, it would have continuous ADA sidewalks and drainage added to it. Constitution is another project from Jenkins to Classen would be widened to three lanes with bike lanes and continuous ADA sidewalks. And then Lindsay Street itself, actually, from Pickard to Jenkins. One of the top flooding problems in the city is Elm and Lindsay Street. Many students are familiar with that. We would propose not to widen Lindsay Street through campus, but to add the bike lanes, add continuous ADA compliant sidewalks, and fix the flooding problem that exists right there. We even are interested in working with OU to potentially make some changes to the pedestrian crossings there to maybe even separate the crossings from the street so that it would help with traffic and be safer for people crossing as well. So as mentioned, please register to vote by March?
Ninth.
Ninth, so you can vote April second. Stormwater, transportation, two big things to vote on there and not enough students vote. So I'm going to be having a Ward Seven meeting, probably, I'm aiming for March twenty-seventh. That'll be the last Wednesday in March. It'll be about a week before the election. Probably, I had a ward meeting at Reeves Park in December, so I'll probably have this one at the Cobblestone Creek Clubhouse, south of Highway Nine where I usually have Ward Seven meetings. And so that'll be a tentative date for that. I also, I think Mayor Miller may make some comments about the RTA, so I'll save that for you, although I'm very excited about it. Okay, well, well, Mayor Miller and myself and Councilmember Clark and Councilmember Bierman were in Oklahoma City on Wednesday last week in downtown at the Santa Fe Station. The mayors of Edmund and Moore and Dell City and Midwest City and Oklahoma City were there. Former Governor Brad Henry was there. And it was the official kickoff of the Regional Transit Authority governing body, the board. This, the RTA is what is going to bring regional transit, public transit to the Oklahoma City area, which Norman will be a part of. That will include a metropolitan interconnected bus system and a commuter rail system that would connect Norman to Edmund and Tinker Air Force Base with downtown OKC being the central hub of that. Norman has projected four stops, two of which are in Ward Seven, very excited. Highway Nine and Lindsay Street would be the two Norman, Ward Seven stops. So we had a big kickoff for that. The inaugural meeting was last Wednesday. Norman's representative on that board is Marion Hutchinson and he probably knows more about public transit than anybody in Norman that I know of. So very excited about that. And a last thing I would just mention, though, is I just want to thank the residents of Ward Seven for re-electing me two weeks ago to fourth term on the city council here. I never would have thought in a million years when I first was elected in two thousand thirteen that I would now be the longest-serving member of the council when I take the new oath of office in July. So I'm very excited about that. I'm excited to keep working with the rest of you that'll still be here. What's that? Well, but he'll be gone in July, so. Okay, I gotta go to August, but you won't be here anymore. Anyway, so I'm very excited about it. I appreciate Ward Seven voters. We had what I believe is a, maybe a record turnout in Ward Seven for a city council election, or at least as far as we know, we haven't seen a high turnout in Ward Seven historically. So thank you all, I'm looking forward to getting back to work, or continuing to work actually, so thank you.
Hello. I was going to keep it short and sweet, but I have a couple of things to say. Councilmember Castleberry, please don't ever feel obligated to apologize on my behalf. I am not sorry that I turned around whenever you came up here talking about anti-choice legislation in the city. I think it is inappropriate and especially because there is a separation of church and state for a reason. Also, as representatives and as council members, we do not always listen to every single citizen of our city when we are, I mean, while we listen, but we don't necessarily have to take your opinions into our decisions whenever we make them. We are making strides and I encourage you to look up in countries where they do ban abortions and they, they are still happening, they are unsafe, and underserved communities are disproportionately affected by it, specifically women of color who are also low income. They can't afford safe abortions. So it does hurt women. And on a day when we are having a proclamation about Women, International Women's Day, this is extremely inappropriate. It shouldn't say, "In God We Trust" up here, there is, and I understand your perspective. When you spoke last time, it was very touching and I get that, I do. But we have to consider the safety aspect and the health aspect and women's reproductive justice as well as men's reproductive justice. So aside from that, thank you to all the OU students who showed up tonight. I too am an OU student. I am a grad student at OU, so you've got some OU representation down here. Somebody who lives right next to campus, somebody who's on campus all the time and, well, you too, I guess you're on campus all the time as well. So I'm a, I'm a grad student at OU with my public, yeah, public administration. I graduated in May, I'm super stoked about it. I can't wait to graduate and take a break. You guys are all invited. And so it's a, it's fun. And I was elected actually last year for, when I ran, I was elected on my birthday, April third, the day after the election this year is going to be April second for the stormwater utility, stormwater bond, and transportation bond that we have worked very hard on and our staff has worked really hard on. So I encourage you guys to all get out and vote and like Councilmember said earlier, please register to vote here in Norman because even though you may not live here forever, you will, you are here now and the decisions that we make and the decision, you are, you can be part of those decisions. You have the most power and control here at the local government level, okay? So go out and vote, it's fun stuff. I will probably be on campus with my megaphone before class. I do that, I have my clipboard back. He was nice enough to return it to me yesterday. So I'll be registering voters until March ninth for the, for that vote. And then as Councilmember Clark mentioned earlier, I, we will be hosting a joint cleanup, weather permitting, because I do not like the cold, but the staff will be helping that out with that as well. That'll be at Sutton Wilderness. Please come and join us, it's fun, it'll be great. We're going to collect plastic bags and whatever else is out there, it'll be a surprise. And then on Thursday as well, in addition to the legislative, or I'm sorry, the Criminal Justice Forum, there will also be, the Sierra Club is hosting a legislative forum. And the Sierra Club is our local, in case you guys who are maybe not familiar, they are our environmental, there are a couple environmental groups actually, the Blue Thumb will probably be helping us with the cleanup as well. And, but Sierra Club is having their legislative forum on Thursday. And so those are really important because there is going to, there are going to be bills at the state level this, this coming legislative session and I encourage you guys all to go up there and advocate for environmental justice and including myself, I'll join you. And then the next Ward Eight meeting is going to be just the Sunday before the April second vote. We have in Ward Eight- We have in Ward Eight, I'm hosting bimonthly ward meetings every two months. That was a campaign promise, and I'm holding true to that. And so that'll be March 31st, for those of you at home, March 31st from 1:30 to 3:00 at Fire Station Seven. And I'm glad that we're all using fire stations now. They're a perfect place to host meetings. And I think that's all I've got for you tonight.
I think I'm going to close by saying I believe that when the public elects us, that they have a right to expect a certain level of courtesy and decency in the way we treat everybody else, whether it's on Facebook, whether it is on email, whether it's on the phone, in person, or during a meeting. And I'm not sure that I always see that, but whoever comes up here to talk to us, whoever comes to my office, I believe they have a right to my respect and courtesy, whether I agree with them or not. I don't agree with a lot of things that people say when they come up here, when they come to my office, when they call, when they email me. I don't agree with everything that's said up here on the dais, but I think we have a right, or we have an obligation to our public, to be courteous and to be respectful and to listen. And I don't think that's too much to ask. With that, I will adjourn the meeting.